Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. All right, everybody's present?
That's awesome.
Full business approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of one June 2023 were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of one June 2023 as presented.
No move, second.
Have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Would you just come up and please state your name and address?
Jeff Schugart at 110 Fern Cliff, and I would like to ask about code enforcement for upkeeping your property and everything. We have a couple occupants in our neighborhood that have junk cars in their neighborhood, and they've been there for several years. He's had as many as 11 cars at one time, and he's down to about eight right now. And we've also had problems with, well, the house right next to me, they allowed the grass, but finally someone did contact them and did do something about that. And then there's other people that use the street as their parking lot and everything.
Okay.
Yeah, so I know there was a property on Fern Cliff that I know we've had a lot of issues with. It might be the same one. I don't, I can't recall the address off the top of my head, but I know.
112?
That could be it. I can't remember it off the top of my head, but I know there's a resident on that street who had expressed frustration with some of his neighbors about that.
118, yeah.
Well, the one that I'm thinking of, I mean, he's talked to us a few years, and we will cite them. But, I mean, a lot of times we'll cite them, they'll pay the fine, and the challenges continue. We can double check on that, though, and I know one of the misconceptions sometimes. I would need to double check with code enforcement. Yeah, I would need to double check with our code enforcement officer on that. I'm not positive on that, but I know that.
If you're a repeater, I think the fine would double every time and triple or whatever.
Well, my understanding, if I recall correctly, is, again, I'm not the prosecutor, but my recollection is that first conviction, let's say, is a certain amount of fine, second conviction's another fine, third it goes, it just keeps going up incrementally, whatever's been approved. Again, I could be wrong, but I know a lot of our ordinance does do that.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's legitimately an issue, and I know we cited them last year, and it's, is it the one, I think, that they have like a handicap plate or a handicap minor in the residence or something?
I don't know. I don't think so. I think that's something that if you checked and asked if they could see the minor, I don't know if they would have it.
I know one of the things that we were running into, if it's the same one I'm thinking of, we need to be able to see the license plate in order to determine that it's untagged. So a lot of times people will back into their driveways because we can't access the house, I guess, if we can't see it.
You can't get out and look at the license?
We can't go on someone's property, I don't believe, without a reason.
Well, I mean, if they're breaking in ordinance, right, I mean, that's a reason, in my view.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, if they're, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, you can only go where you have public access. Like, for example, you can go up a driveway to the sidewalk to the front door and back. You can't really go, you can't go off the beaten path.
Yeah, I think so.
I think that's the one that.
Yeah, that's a mess.
Yep.
I agree.
We'll definitely look at it.
Okay. And then a couple of other things. How's the pool coming?
Well, the pool committee is working it. Tim probably has a better update. I think they're getting pretty close.
The design committee has met two different times. They're going to meet again in a week and a half. Right now, they're talking about different things like features, how many lap lanes and things like that they want. Just.
Oh, so it's still in design?
Yeah, I think they're going to have it out to bid hopefully this fall, so I would imagine next year.
Okay, I thought it'd be started this year, but it's going to be late this year. Also, one, can I have some suggestions? Put a fence around the concession area, and there is a reason. People will take food, and you'll get it in the pool. If you've ever seen the show American Ninja, they have one guy that jumps off the, a dive with, a dive board with a corn dog in his hand, and you can probably get people emulating him or something like that.
Yeah.
And that's, but put a fence around it and say, no food beyond this point. And the second thing is, have you thought about possibly having adults night only for a couple nights?
That's a good idea. That's something we could look at.
Maybe from 18 to?
Yeah. We can bring that.
You can't move anymore or something. I don't know.
Well, I mean, they're just talking about programs now, so we can bring that in.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Bob, you're up.
Good evening. Rob Gaslin, Cottonwood Drive here in Lansing, also with Fire District Number One.
Greg Fontenot, also on Cottonwood Drive. I'm a trustee, one of the trustees you appointed. I live on Cottonwood Drive.
And Greg will be up to help me in just a minute. Last time, I talked about manning the force, all the challenges of getting people, not just with us, but around the nation, volunteers, part-time, full-time, fulfilling the ranks so that we can do the business that we're supposed to do. I mentioned some ways of mitigating that, some economy of force measures that we can take, but I want to circle back for just a few minutes to talk about that tonight. We can't hire our way back into being fully manned. What do good leaders do to improve the situation? That's the question. Our chief, Chief Stackhouse, certainly a good leader, is working on some hybrid solutions. How do we work the mix, full-time, part-time, volunteer? What are things that we can do, given Kansas statutes and Kansas Department of Labor rules? How do we work within those in order to bring part-time and volunteer into the mix a little bit better? How do we establish relationships with schools to build a pipeline, whether it's high schools or community colleges? He's working those things. How do we get grants to help us in that area? Those are things that the chief is working on. Those kind of work on the margins. What are true economy of force measures so that we can do more things with fewer people? We do have some tools. The first on the list would be mutual aid and auto aid, automatic aid agreements. And mutual aid agreements have been around a long time, back when I was doing a little bit of this a long time ago. I became very familiar with that. Those are agreements where if you call, we come; if we call, you come. So it's an established relationship, usually between the fire chiefs, and they set some parameters, but there has to be a call in order for the other agency to respond. Compare that with auto aid agreements. Those are, we just respond. We don't wait for a phone call. And I was kind of reflexively against those when I first started working with Fire District Number One. It seemed strange. It seemed wasteful. Chief Stackhouse gave me an education on it, and I saw with my own eyes how it has become a necessity to deal with decline in manpower, for instance. So if we have out in rural part of the county, we might have a fire district or a fire department that, on a particular day of the week or a particular time of the day, can't even fill one particular apparatus with a crew. Well, we can't wait to resolve that if there's a brush fire or a structure fire. We have these agreements, and we just go. The fire chiefs work out these agreements. They establish them through a set of protocols that the dispatcher has, and that's how we determine whether we're going to do that or not. There are some virtues in aid agreements. Besides getting the fires put out quickly, we get our firefighters to see different fire departments and fire districts in action, get to work with them, get to see different kinds of structures, different types of property. But there's also problems with them, greater operating costs, possibility of degraded ability to respond. In our own backyard, if we're out somewhere else, we have mechanisms to deal with that. And greater exposure to hazards where there otherwise wouldn't be any. Quick example, we had an engine that was being driven last week on county roads just to get up to operating temperatures following some contractor maintenance on the cooling system. So this is not an auto aid or mutual aid, but we were out of sector with our vehicle. Oncoming vehicle on the county road crossed the center line, forced our engine into the ditch. So fortunately, no significant damage to the vehicle, a few dollars extra to get it fixed, but it did take a vehicle, did take a crew out of service for a while. And ask any accident investigator, when they work backward, what caused an accident later on. It's being overtired. It's being, it's doing something that you weren't planning on doing earlier in the day and so on. So that increases our risk to do that. Overtime works well. We've used it a lot, but you can blow a budget, burn out employees. Two quick examples, Grand Prairie, Texas, just a few years ago before COVID, $500,000 budget overrun due to overtime associated by staffing shortages, major injuries, and long-term illnesses. More recently, in 2020, Seattle Fire Department paid out 37, this is post-COVID now, paid out 37.7 million. To me, that's a lot of money, on overtime for broader workload with far fewer firefighters. Their words unprecedented staffing shortages. That year, some of their firefighters worked more than 4,000 hours. That's the equivalent of two years of 40-hour weeks in the span of one year. One guy even worked 4,900 hours. At some times, the city of Seattle couldn't operate some of their units or their equipment. Happens locally, too. Our own Leavenworth Times talked about Chief Birch. Here, he says that in 2022, a challenging year for Leavenworth Fire Department because staffing shortages. He said mandated overtime had to be implemented to ensure an adequate number of people were on duty each day. So we don't do that lightly because we can burn out people, and for emergency services, that's a real problem. Another tool that's available, particularly to governing bodies, is the regionalizing of fire departments into fire districts. I'm going to ask Greg to come up and talk just for a minute about one of those. You already know about Fire District Number One, that's us. Fire District Number Two, new kid on the block, but something different from Greg.
So three years ago, when the city council appointed me as a trustee, my task or mission was given as governance. And so my approach to examining governance, how did other people do what we're trying to do, was to visit other firefighting and emergency services entities to see how they approached the problems that they had. And I want to start by talking about the first department I visited, which happens to be Sedgwick County Fire District Number One. Imagine for a moment a donut in Sedgwick County in which the center or the donut hole is the city of Wichita, Kansas. If you do that, and you look around the donut, the outer edge of the donut, there are a number of cities and small towns that have banded together to form Sedgwick County Fire District Number One. I want to give you some sense of the scale of Sedgwick County because it's a lot bigger than we are. According to the 2020 census, Sedgwick County's population was 516,042, including some 307,532 people living in the city of Wichita. The population outside of the county of Wichita was 119,410 who live in one of 17 towns or unincorporated parts of the county. What that tells you is the small towns in the donut, on the outer side of the donut, are not unlike our towns. As a matter of necessity, four small townships, or small volunteer departments, rather, in the county amalgamated to form Sedgwick County Fire District Number One. That district began operations on January the 1st, 1955, with six fire stations. And they've got pictures of these original fire stations and the clunky-looking fire department vehicles. It's a long time ago now. As population grew, that district scaled up to meet the needs of the county and other small towns therein. The district now boasts eight fire stations and 150 full-time employees, including among them 140 firefighters, 27 lieutenants who lead shifts, 21 captains, and six division chiefs. That's all firefighters. There are also some administrative folks. Their manpower and budget are a bit more than 10 times ours. Despite the size of the department, they can only manage ISO 4, which is a rating for insurance purposes that will tell you what it costs to insure your home. Smaller is better. We're able to do somewhat better than that, but because of the large rural area in Wichita, or rather, Sedgwick County, they have a number of districts that are at nine and 10. We are, much of our district is ISO 3 as a consequence of having the two fire stations. However, like Sedgwick County, we also have some of the remoter parts of our fire district are ISO nine and 10. Relationships between the fire department and fire district and Wichita Fire Department originally were not so great, and they had some bumps along the way, but the two current chiefs are working together, and they have an approach to cooperation that includes things like conducting training, sharing facilities, and managing joint emergency operations. Some things that we could look at is maybe sharing some facilities, maybe working together on some of the training opportunities. In summary, early on, the cities and towns, the small cities and towns, you know, places like Valley Center, Landale, Derby, and so forth, in Sedgwick County found virtue in combining resources to form a fire district. I would argue that was an absolute necessity in their case. They are now substantially better resourced and organized than any of the constituent entities would have been able to do on their own. I would also tell you, I've been spelunking on the internet cave, you know, a little clickbait. You know, when it says fire department or something, I click it because I like seeing naked fire engines. But you could also get some interesting data. Some of the departments in this state are as small as eight, and then some of them are very large, but they all share some similar problems and concerns. I have, you can find access to state data. It's not as easy to get as I'd like it to be, but you can find out how many departments there are per capita in every county, as well as how many per square mile. When you look at ours per capita, we don't look that good. When you look per square mile, we look pretty good. If you have any questions on any of these perspectives of the fire district, as I've laid it out for you, and how it compares to other entities locally, I'd be glad to answer questions. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Who manages that Sedgwick County Fire District? Is there interlocal agreement down there like we have?
They are not organized entirely the way we are because it amalgams with a great many more entities. So having interlocal agreements among, I think it's 17 towns, would be tough to do. I think, I can't remember, but I think theirs is done by the county commission, is what I recall. I wrote the memorandum, but my memory is not perfect. Yes, sir, anything else?
Quick close. It is the county commissioners, so it's a different structure and a different statute than what we have. So a caution to kind of close on staffing is a politically charged issue because it's budget-driven, and budgets always bring out the best in everybody when we talk about it. Sours and benefits in fire departments nationwide typically make up about 90% of the budget. Ours is substantially less than that. There are conflicting approaches in calculating what the staffing is. To give you an example of the conflict, the International Association of City and County Managers Handbooks has one model for doing this, but it looks at it as percentages. So you could take an individual on the fire ground in their model and divide that person up. So if a particular individual is not being used for a particular task, that person could be used somewhere else. That's at odds with the NFPA, National Fire Protection Association's model, where it's a little bit more granular. So you have a leader in a team for firefighters who is deliberately not dedicated to doing things like humping a hose somewhere because they want that leader to be available for situational awareness, for communications, that kind of thing. That does not show up in the model for the city and county managers handbook. So there's conflict in how those things are determined. And when you add all those up, you can come up with two very different ideas of what does it take to put out a structure fire, and how do you build that to be the totality of a fire department or a fire district? How do you resolve that? Well, it's beyond my level to be able to do that. You need a good fire chief who can help sort that out, and Chief Stackhouse certainly would fit that bill. Close with an idea that most firefighters would agree with, which would you rather have in a fire? An old 1968 500-gallon-per-minute pumper and five or six crew members, or 2,008 1,500-gallon-per-minute rig with one or, or two or three firefighters on it? And the answer always is going to be the older rig with greater number of people. It takes people in order to do this business well. Costs money to do that, but manning the force is really important. Thanks for listening. New topics next month.
Bob, I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the history lesson. It does inform me, but I would like to add, sprinkle in a little bit of our department, like when you're talking about the challenges, how many people's in our department?
Sure.
How many full-time, how many part-time, how many volunteer?
Yes, and we did send you that email this morning. The chief sent it to you. Just got back from vacation, so it's in queue for you.
Okay. But, I mean, as you do these, bring it home. You know, tell me the history lesson would put it in perspective, but also tell me how does this equate to us in Fire District One?
Very good. And on that note, our meeting is next Tuesday at 7:00 PM, Fire District Number One. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I think that was it. Those are the only two hands I saw. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Item number two is officer recognition. Police Chief Lehman will recognize two of our officers for life-saving actions.
Mayor Council, Officer Beltz, tonight, we want to recognize a couple of officers for a good job that they did back in May. On May 20th, in the early morning hours, they were dispatched and responded to a medical emergency. You guys can work her to sign on the side of me. You don't want to stay behind me. They responded to an address on the southwest side of the city for a medical emergency. When the officers arrived on scene, there were family members outside wanting them to rush in. When they went in, they found an early 30s male that was unresponsive. They began to administer CPR, also deploy the AED that we carry in our patrol car, check for his signs to sit there and see if they could get him going again. They were able to get his airway clear. They were able to start CPR. They began to hook up the AED and were able to bring the subject back where he started breathing on his own, at which time EMS and Fire District One arrived on scene and took over care and treatment for this individual. So for these officers' actions and getting there and remaining calm, doing what they've been trained to do, we believe, you know, helped save this person's life, at least give him a fighting chance until advanced procedures can get there and get there on scene. We're kind of limited, you know, AED and CPR are qualifications, and that's what we carry with ourselves when we go to these. So these officers were able to get there. They were able to do what they needed to do, and that's why we're here tonight. So with that, we award them a, an accommodation for the job well done. We also award a life-saving ribbon that they can wear on their uniforms, so that way it's recognition for them as officers for the good job that they do. So.
Thank you, sir.
There's that. They also want you to give you, you each got to give a speech, too. Thank you very much. And I think Connie wants to take a picture of you guys.
Pretty demanding.
Very, very, very demanding. Very demanding.
Mayor Council, thank you.
Congratulations, too. Okay, new business. Item number three is authorization of potential partnership with Landale for water line on Center Drive. Landale would like to put the water line construction project that is along Center Drive out for bid. City staff will work with Landale staff for a potential formal contract following the Landale's bid opening on August 2nd. I need a motion to authorize Landale to solicit for bids for the water line project along Center Drive and approve the city's willingness to partner in the project in the amount not to exceed $400,000.
So moved.
I'm a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a roll.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number four is authorization to sell Lot 2 of Lansing Town Center Replat Tractor Supply Company, and their representatives have negotiated with the city to transfer ownership of Lot 2 of the Lansing Town Center subdivision. So I need a motion to approve the purchase and sale agreement.
No move, second.
I'm a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Couple of questions.
Sure. Go down.
As I read through that legal contract or whatever that I got on my email, we're basically, we're selling them the property, but basically at a very reduced cost. Are we getting their old property building and property on the corner of Eisenhower, Rain and Eisenhower?
No, they'd be putting that on the market. They've asked us for input as far as what types of businesses we'd like to see there, but they would be selling.
They're going to be selling. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, the reduced price was because we're getting a brand-new TSC by the current we have and the location that it's at.
Can somebody sum up the restrictions on the city if we approve this?
Yep. So the two lots directly north of where this would be, I mean, there are some restrictions there. I should say a fair amount of restrictions.
Yep.
If you guys look at.
Want to say Exhibit E or Exhibit D?
Yeah, I was going to say it's Page 30 in Exhibit E. So, I mean, you can see a lot of the restrictions on there. A lot of them are agriculture-related. A lot of them are like animal-related, pet food and things like that. However, it does only apply to the two lots to the north, so it wouldn't impact the 14-acre lot. So.
A lot better than it was.
Farm equipment, that kind of stuff.
They backed off on a lot, didn't they?
Yeah.
They did. I mean, I was very pleased.
We spoke with them about this a lot, and Josh did a really good job working with them on this.
That's all for you guys.
So, I mean, I know these types of things aren't definitive, but I mean, the two lots to the north, you know, you could see a restaurant there. You could see a hotel there. You could see a retail shop that doesn't directly compete with Tractor Supply. I mean, there's a lot of things you could see there, but you wouldn't be able to put an Ace Hardware or a Petco or something like that right next to it.
I think that's a great reason.
Yeah, yeah. And again, that 14-acre lot north of Mary Street is unencumbered.
Right.
What was it addressing in Exhibit A? It started right underneath where it talks about all the farm equipment, farm animals, Exhibit E on the restrictions, Tim, on that page. It talked about restrictions, reference bowling alleys and that kind of stuff. What were they addressing there? They're not actually saying that something couldn't be there. It's just, it was talking about sharing parking.
Yeah, they had a lot of concerns about parking. So I guess I'll say they didn't want, pick a business, a church right next door that would have all of their congregants parking in the Tractor Supply parking lot.
And I think that's what it's addressing with bowling alley or a gym or a health business kind of thing.
Yeah, they just didn't want a bunch of people from other businesses parking in their parking lot. One of the things that we talked a lot about that I think made them feel better is, I mean, we have parking restrictions in our rules anyway, but I know that was something they were passionate about. Do you have anything to add on that?
That's part of our UDO, our regulations. We have minimum parking standards. Anything that goes into that area is going to have adequate, more than adequate parking, and that won't be an issue. I know one thing that I've noticed in the contract that I appreciated is if they don't build within 36 months, the property automatically reverts back to us. So, because getting it almost something and then decide they're not going to build, they can't just turn around and sell it.
Yeah. I would say overall, they've been a really good partner in all of this. They've been understanding when we had concerns about that lot north of Mary Street. They were completely fine with adding that 36-month clause. I mean, they were. I mean, they were, I thought they were really understanding and good partners throughout this process. I'm not sure if there's any other examples you have or not, but I, pretty good to work with, I would say.
Are they going to put up a sign that says "Coming Soon"?
That I don't know. The one thing that, you know, sometimes in the back of my mind, I'm always pessimistic, you know, they do have a due diligence period. We feel really confident that area's never been used as a landfill or anything like that, but they do have a due diligence period, so it will still be probably a couple of months before it closes. But I'm not sure if they're going to have a "Coming Soon" sign or anything like that.
"Coming Soon" is not a good thing. People always wanted immediately when you say "Coming Soon," it should say "Future Home of..."
Yeah.
Yeah, but on the other side of that, it also, on the other side of that, Jesse, is you let the citizens know that we are moving, something is happening, we're not destroying wheat.
And you bring up a good point, and we can talk to them about that, too. So, I mean, along those lines, kind of piggybacking on that, we probably have had, and this isn't an exaggeration, maybe 20 or 30 phone calls asking us what's going in south of Mutual People don't realize it's a dental office, and, you know, we've put it in the connection, it's been in all of our minutes.
On our Facebook.
It's even been on Facebook, I think, so, I mean, it's challenging reaching people. So, yeah, maybe a sign would be an okay idea.
The sign as they're driving by would answer all their questions.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
But, Tim, we still don't...
I was going to add something, too, you know, I mean, we're marketing the property for...
You're going to have to come up here, sir.
Yeah, I'm English Pope with ESPN, and, yeah, we're marketing the property, and so once we get this under contract, we'll include all that in our marketing materials and really reach back out to a lot of the retailers, just say, hey, there's movement here. Maybe they relook at this and say, hey, maybe we get an urgent care clinic that looks at it or another bank, so we're going to make sure that, once we do this, and then once we get, hopefully moving forth with the apartment community, that we include that in our marketing efforts. So, just wanted to let you all know that.
Sit-down family restaurant.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, not, nothing against all the fast food restaurants we've got, but, you know.
Get a Texas Roadhouse.
It's been one of the big things that we've been trying to, you know, trying to get is a good sit-down family restaurant.
Yeah.
I like the one that used to be across the street by the library that now turned into a doctor's office, you know?
It used to be called the Overlook.
Same, right, same reasons today why we can't get sit-down restaurants was the same reason why that restaurant closed, overlooked, yeah.
If you guys remember...
Lack of service, lack of people wanting to work.
Well, and that's a big part of it, but, too, if you guys remember, I think when we worked with that company, I can't remember their names, but four or five years ago when they talked about how they track that cell phone data, you know what, like Big Brother's watching you, that is kind of serious, but the more people with cell phones that are eating at our businesses or shopping in Lansing, those businesses know that, and then they can say, hey, there's 200 more people shopping in Lansing today than there were two years ago. So I think that would make us more appealing, so.
Yeah, and we want to be your partner in all this, you know, like if you guys have ideas about uses that you want, just let us know that, you know, convey that to Tim, and then, hey, we'll hit the phones, make the dials, you know, we've been doing that for a while, but I think once you get progress, and I think this Tractor Supply deal will be a good thing, because it's like when you start moving dirt, people start seeing it when they're driving by, then they're going to say, hey, this thing's finally taken root, so, you know, bulldozers and excavating equipment are what people want to see, there's movement and progress, so. But anything you all have, certainly, you know, relay that to Tim, and we'll, you know, we'll get after it as far as getting the, making the calls, and can't guarantee anything, but we'll do our best to at least make them aware of it, so.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, English. Appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number five is request to approve supplemental agreement number two for the McIntyre Road Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project, City Project 2021-04. One of the final steps involves soil mooring, rock coring at each manhole location to determine the soil conditions. This action provides detailed information for potential bidders to refine their cost estimates, excuse me, and creates overall more favorable bids for the city to consider. The original contract for $60,000 to perform the geotech work, the supplemental agreement number two is an additional $28,400 for the tree clearing, traffic control, and easement modifications. So I need a motion to approve the supplemental agreement number two for additional geotech and engineering services in support of the McIntyre Sewer Project, Intercepter Project Number 2021-04.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Tony is available.
Mark is lighting him up.
No? Okay, call the roll.
He only comes when he wants more money. When he wants more money, he's always here shining and smiling. More money, Tony. That's why I'm going to have to start calling him. I'm just thinking, it's something you got to do. You don't really have an option.
This is money well spent.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I can control that, so call the roll.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Department heads, any reports? Nope. City attorney?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
City engineer, I love to say that. Thanks, Mike. Tim, what do you got?
If any of you are around, the Community Blood Bank is having a blood drive downstairs in the Community Center Friday, June 30th. The city has been partnering with the Lions Club and the Kiwanis Club on that the last few years, so please, if you're able to, come by, there is a blood shortage. On the subject of Tony, he was briefing me on our project recently, and, you know, one of the things that is always challenging when we're doing sewer lines is potential conflicts with trees, well-established trees. And I know Tony had been talking to a lot of property owners in the area, and that's something that people are very passionate about. And our current plans showed an area maybe taking out a few trees. Tony met with the property owners, and he could have just said, you know what, the trees are coming down no matter what. But instead, Tony brainstormed, Tony talked to our engineers, Tony talked to the Kansas Department of Transportation, Tony found a way to save this residence's trees, to improve their yard, to make it an easier land acquisition. So I just really want to thank Tony for that. That's the kind of thing on projects like this that people don't see, so really, good job on that, Tony, really thankful for you doing that, so. English earlier had mentioned the Zimmerman Properties Project. We had the state of Kansas reaching out to us, asking, or verifying, I should say, that the city was generally supportive of that project. You guys recall that property was already rezoned, and, you know, they're in the process of buying that from the city. So I think the state just wanted to verify that we were generally okay with their grant application. Before the mayor and I sent the state anything, we wanted to verify the council was still okay with that, we didn't want to send them something, so.
Roger, that work.
Yep. Well, I'll coordinate with mayor on that, and we can do that, so. That's all I have for tonight.
All right, thanks, Tim. We'll go around the horn. Marcus.
Thanks for coming tonight there.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Love to hear from you. Really appreciate it, and the pool ideas as well. Rob and Greg, thanks for coming tonight. I appreciate, I appreciate the updates, Greg and Rob, pretty well. Congratulations to our two police officers, and our first responders, that's pretty good. And Josh, I came in tonight, you're still here, great job on the Tractor Supply stuff there, man. Great job on it, I appreciate it. Mayor, that's all I've got, thank you.
All right, thanks, Marcus. Jesse?
Yeah, thanks for coming in and giving us your input and your opinion about things going on in the community. We really appreciate anything we can receive from the community to help us run the city for you guys, so. Yeah, I'm excited about Tractor Supply staying in the city, that's an awesome thing to do. So it's a good business for our community, and I agree that once dirt starts turning in Lansing Town Center, things will additionally move there, so, that's all I've got.
Thanks, Jesse. Greg?
So, again, thank you for coming in and sharing everything. It's good to know what we could be getting into if we go as far as we do, and thank you for sharing the information, and I know Tim will get in on it. Congratulations to our two police officers. Our local servants are out there doing everything they can, and we do appreciate it. I'm going to put a little bit of a local community plug-in. Third Thursday's in Lansing, over at the 10 and 2 Coffee, they have a band, they have food trucks. The next one is July 20th, and the band is twice on Sunday, and it's a lot of fun. So if anybody watching this has nothing to do on a Thursday night starting at 6 o'clock, you can go out there. And, Mayor, in this day, on this day, in 1752, Benjamin Franklin, flying a kite in a thunderstorm, proved that lightning is electricity. That's all I have, Mayor.
That's enough. Dan?
Always appreciate the citizens coming in and giving us firsthand information and keeping us on our toes, appreciate that. Our volunteers coming in, Fire District One, I really appreciate it, you know, and thank you for responding to some of my questions, I appreciate the extra detail. And Tony, your staff does excellent work, whether it's TSC, economic development, or just answering questions, I appreciate that, and your letters that accompany the agenda. Good information, thank you.
Karen?
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate you coming in, also. Three things have gone in, you think about this. It's had empty for years. We've got Dennis Office, we've got the Kansas Community College moving in, and now TSC, so things are finally starting to fall into place, and I hope we get a solid, I hope our citizens are just happy with the movement we're having. Tony, so, you know, Gene Kirby said you were a jerk, and I said, he is not, that guy has a good work.
Well, I won't tell you any more secrets.
She's related to him.
It upset me, so I just want you to know I got your back, and I appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Don?
How do I follow that?
I don't.
I don't either. Police officers, congratulations, Greg and Bob, thanks for the information you provided. Sir, about the codes, we do have a code enforcement officer, you can always call the code enforcement officer and say, hey, I think there's a problem here, and he can come out and check it out. Please keep us informed. We don't know if something's broken, and we can't make it happen, can't make a fix, so thanks for, you know, coming in and doing that. I called Josh about a week and a half ago about the golf course up here, I heard from a reliable source that it was going to close and be sold. Did you ever find any information out on that?
I'm not able to confirm that.
I'm hearing that they're mailing out refund checks.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, I heard from a reliable source that they're, you know, the golf course has been going downhill and whatever, and, you know, at one time, we talked about here that we could afford it or whatever, you know, we could get it for a reasonable price, maybe make it a municipal course, you know, Lansing buy it and make it a municipal course. That's something we should probably look into if we can.
I want to say that we actually made an offer on that golf course back when...
Back when the country club tailed out.
Mayor Bernard was the mayor.
Either Pittsburgh or Fort Scott has a golf course that's owned by the city down there.
Did not win that.
One or the other, I can't remember which one it is.
I just think, I just recommend that, I think we should look into it and see what's going on and what we can do.
We can try to reach out, so I know we've been hearing these rumors, the same rumors our citizens have been hearing for a few years, and we've reached out to them, and they're usually pretty tight-lipped.
I've even called the owner myself.
Oh, really? Okay.
And this was, you know, the rumors over the years, and he assured me, and his son assured me, no, no, we're not closing it, we're going to, you know, drive on. But this here recently, this one that came up, I got from a pretty reliable source, and been unable to get a hold of the owners to really confirm or not confirm what they're doing.
If you have their contact information, I'd love to meet with them, I'm sure Mayor would love to meet with them, just to kind of figure out what they're doing, because it's zoned.
I'll take it out of my computer at home and I'll get it up for you.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's zoned agriculture, so, I mean, they, whatever, whoever they sell it to would probably need to rezone it.
Oh, yeah.
So we would need to be involved on some level, anyway.
Housing area, whatever.
Yeah.
And the only other thing that, I had a question the other day about elevators, and I reached out to Mike over here about inspection of elevators. We only have a couple of them in town, I know my church has one, and Twin Oaks up there has one in their high-rise building, but they're supposed to be inspected every...
The school, sorry.
The school, yeah. But they're supposed to be inspected every year, and they normally are by the company, but our church got a letter from the state fire marshal, and it said there has to be an inspection done by a third party. Has there been some new regulations or something that has changed?
Yeah, that's new. My church got the same thing, and you have to call an elevator company, they come out and inspect it.
Isn't it Kohn?
But not the one that put the elevator in. What I'm saying is, our church had an elevator put in when the church was built.
Same as ours.
Every year, they've had that elevator inspected like it's supposed to be.
Right.
But now this letter from the fire marshal says, well, that company that put the elevator in and has been inspecting it and repairing it every year...
Can no longer do it.
Is okay, but they want a third-party inspection on it, which costs $300, $400, but I haven't heard of any regulations or anything at the state level on that.
Yeah, the MBI do our elevator inspection, and they're the ones that put it in, I'm pretty sure, and they do the inspection every year, so.
We can find out.
And they sent the paperwork in, and the fire marshal was good with it, so.
I'm just trying to figure this out, so I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Your fire chief, check on them before you come in. There you go.
Okay, I'll do that. That's all I got, Mayor.
All right, thanks. Kevin?
Gentlemen, thank you for coming in, appreciate it. And Chief, congratulations to your officers in handling that. Joshua, TSC, thank you very much for cooperating with each other and getting this thing moving forward. And Tony, once again, you're just, you're the best. You do more than you ought, than you should, so, we appreciate it. And to add a little bit to what Councilman Brungard said, as far as the citizens go, back when I was on the council in the mid-teens, it seemed like the council and the staff were handcuffed or running into brick walls a lot. Whatever happened with this ability or the dedication that you guys have and the staff has, it seems like you guys are moving forward at a very advantageous pace. Things are moving now, whereas before, you were running into brick walls, so the citizens need to understand that the council's doing everything they can, the staff is doing everything they can, and I think the experience and the dedication and the stability that I see now, that was evidence back then, is coming to fruition, especially over in Town Center. They wanted to do a lot of things for quite a while now, and now they're able to do it, and they're coming through with it, so. Citizens need to know that council's doing, and the staff are doing everything they can to make Lansing a better place. That's all I have.
Thanks, Karen. Jean?
Is it safe to talk, oh, Tony, you're...